We call the Reno County Planning Commission's October 16, 2025 meeting to order. Staff, would you please call the roll?
Isley?
Here.
Grayann?
Here.
Schaefer?
Here.
Seltzer?
Here.
Macklin?
Here.
Martin?
Gertsen?
Here.
Well, welcome everyone. Eric Martin. We've, I trust you've had a chance to review, review the packets you received. And those packets were the minutes from the September 18, 2025 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion on those minutes. Okay. And move and second it. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of approval of September 18, 2025 minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. New business for today. Mark, we've got some text amendments that you've prepared for us and some edits and whatnot. Would you mind taking the floor and adding some to that?
Sure. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, so the last month, we introduced a series of text amendments regarding ADUs and cell towers, shipping containers, and manufactured homes. The board had some edits and some good discussion last month. And so what's before you today was the directive I received where you wanted a kind of a clean copy of those edits. What I did is I took out everything that we had struck through with the existing regulation to kind of help show what the regulation may look like if adopted here as presented here. So I thought what I'll do is go through some of those changes here and see what the board thinks and see kind of where we go. I thought we had a great discussion, you know, last month on some good points. And so hopefully I hit those points and certainly make further changes. And I've got one to suggest to the board anyway right now, but I'll just take it from the, from the top and we'll go through this and then open up the floor for discussion on each one. So starting with Article One, we added a definition of dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit. We changed the word accessory dwelling unit to mean the word additional because the board last month, if you recall, didn't want to limit the size of a second dwelling unit as far as being based off of the original parent house. So this is more of just a second dwelling unit. We decided to call it an additional dwelling unit. So I just changed the word from accessory to additional there.
Mark? On that definition, it ends with independent living facility. And that's terminology from a, from the elder care world. So that, I mean, I know what it means if you read the whole definition, I think you get it, but that kind of caused me pause there.
Do you have a suggestion? It was intended to say that it's a
Single family dwelling.
Used as an independent dwelling.
Independent dwelling instead? Just trying to
That would, that would make sense. Had like a
Well, that's how it starts out, is a single family dwelling.
Yep. Permanent, single family dwelling. I like that.
So it's dwelling three times in one sentence.
That's a lot.
Yeah. It was meant to convey the fact that this is a full-service house, not restricted by, you know, like what we have with guest house where you can't have a kitchen facility. I mean, this is a fully functional house is what I'm trying to say by saying independent living facility. And to Alan's, you know, point, you know, using the word dwelling three times or more in that sentence.
How about we strike for use as a permanent independent dwelling facility and put a second permanent, single family dwelling located on the same zoning lot as a principal
Principal, single family dwelling unit.
So a second, a second independent.
A second independent.
Single family dwelling located on that same zoning lot as the principal, single family dwelling. That means the, the word independent would indicate a separate building altogether. We're not adding on to a house. Then we could strike that for use as a permanent, independent living facility.
Or you could say second, permanent, independent, single family.
Yep, you're talking about changing it at the top.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get rid of that class. Say the second, permanent, independent.
Single family dwelling.
Yeah. And just End the period and delete for use as a permanent, independent living facility.
Yeah.
That takes our Garcia.
Yep. Okay, so then you said strike for use as a permanent. Oh, I was changing it on the second sentence, so okay.
Add permanent.
Second, permanent, single family. Located on the same zoning lot as the principal, single family dwelling. Yeah, it says the same thing as you had, only gets rid of the ambiguity on the definition. Yeah.
All right.
Like it.
Okay, good.
Does that make sense?
That makes sense now, yeah. I was having trouble making sense the other way.
Sorry, I might, I might not have been explaining it.
If this makes sense, we need to change it.
Exactly, exactly. Good. I like, I like simplification.
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, on the backside then regarding communication towers. Good discussion last month on smaller, smaller towers that people put on, on their property, you know, that are say 50 feet or less. So essentially what I did here was I, I put back in the 50 feet or more in height. And so that means that if you're doing a communication tower, it has to be 50 feet or more. If it's less than 50 foot, then it's not subject to these regulations. And so that'll hopefully take care of the, you know, other types of small little communication towers, I think that Alan was mentioning before, if I recall.
Private two-way radio tower.
Private two-way radio or TV antenna.
If that makes sense, so then if it's 50 feet or less, it's not subject to that, that permitting requirement here.
Yep. I like that.
All right.
As I went through this, I looked at number 188, which says the definition of a tavern where malt beverages are sold or served to customers. Like a liquor store would fall into that category then.
Yeah.
So should it say sold and served to customers? That, that's what I feel a tavern is. It sells it and serves it to customers. When it says or, that would also cover what
Maybe it'd be a throwback to the old days when you bring your own bottle and they'd serve it to you.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I can make a note, Harley, yeah, we can look at that, you know, or
If it said sold and served, that's definitely what I call a tavern.
I'd have to look at how, like the other ones, like if we say bar, if there's other definitions in there to see how, how tavern differs then from like a bar. I don't have the rest of the regulations.
You're gonna say, cause liquor laws have changed, haven't they? Cause there isn't like 3-2 beer anymore.
Yeah, there is, but it's not necessarily, it still exists.
Does it?
Yeah.
So like a cereal malt beverage, is that?
Still a cereal malt beverage.
Yeah. So that doesn't, that doesn't take into consideration liquor, like a club then, right?
Right.
Right? You're just defining a tavern, not a private club.
Exactly, yeah. Cause there, I'm sure there are regulations in there on, on the private clubs, yeah. It's just Yeah.
You know, that's the question on and/or is, you know, if somebody could get creative and say, well, I'm just gonna charge a covered charge and I'm not gonna charge for the sale of, sale of liquor.
Yeah.
So if you just say, and served, you know, so if they, you know,
If the liquor
They're not selling it, then they're not, in the care of their serving it.
Right.
So, I mean
Yeah, I guess the definition of a liquor store is for consumption off the premise.
Okay.
So here
We could spend a whole
I was gonna say, this is, we're opening up a
Yeah, we could spend a whole, you know, two or three months on cleaning up definitions and stuff, so I wasn't focusing on, on other ones like that we have.
So I think sold or served encompasses, you know, kind of covers you on both ends. So it kind of prevents people from trying to do an hand run on it, I think. Doesn't hurt to leave the or in there, I don't think. On the height, 50 feet or more, do we need to have that tagline we've got later about including the lightning rod or or who knows what could be extended?
Yeah. Yeah, we can. I mean, I guess it is.
50 feet or more in total height. You could put the word total height and I don't know if that would encompass it enough. I don't know.
Oh, would for me.
It would, it would for me too. If I would read that as total, then that means everything I'm putting on that pole has gotta be a
I mean, I think we should consider that further back because who knows what could be, a new piece of equipment could be attached to the top of a tower and we just say including a lightning rod. So I like the, I like the concept of referring to the total height.
Yeah. Lightning rod or other attachment or something.
Or you just say, just say total height.
Total height.
If there's anything above 50 feet, then it should be regular.
50 feet or more in total height.
Okay.
That should encompass anything that's attached to it, yeah.
Good. Good catch. I didn't do anything with the definitions listed below on, on communication towers. So then if you go over to Article Two, which is the Ag District, again, we're going to in the Ag District permit a manufactured home in the Ag District by right. It is already permitted by right. If you recall, we just took out some of the other language that was in there currently in the Ag District and just simplified it to say manufactured home. And then you refer to the definition of what a manufactured home is. On the backside, number nine, we talk about making cell towers or towers permitted by right. One change that I just saw here within the hour that I need to make here is we say radio or television broadcast towers, they're not that definition. So I want to change that to say essentially a communication tower. Communication tower will match the definition, so I didn't catch that till, like I said, right now. So we need to change that.
Say instead of radio station broadcast, say communication towers.
Yeah, so we just say communication towers. You say communication towers and/or stations, microwave transmitting. I think, oh no, it all, it all says that in the definition as well, so.
Well, at the end, it does say any tower or other similar structure.
So yeah, I think all of that could be struggling. It says communication towers or any tower or other similar structure, so.
Well, that's included in the definition too.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it is, yeah.
So you just say communication towers subject to compliance with Article Nine, pages one, two, three.
Yeah, there you go.
You wanna do that.
There you go.
Right, yeah, there it is.
Just knock everything except that.
And then you just refer back to the definition.
Yeah, there, there it is. Yeah, this is, I had a chance to study too much. I just saw that, okay. We didn't have that definition. So yeah, just communication towers, subject to compliance with Article Nine. And that will follow true for all the other zoning districts, so Article Three, be the same thing.
Yeah. Communication.
So just communication towers, subject to compliance with Article Nine. As I recall, I don't believe there are any changes to the manufactured home stipulations. In the R1 District, it would be changed from a conditional use permit to permitted by right, subject to the owner of the property proving either letter A, B, or C. So they would have to, in order to be permitted by right and get a permit, they'd either have to have a manufactured home existing on the property currently or have a manufacturer that was previously on the lot but removed less than one year from the date of the application. So if they had a home on there six months ago and they can prove that to me, then they can come back and put a new home on that property. Or if they had a previously approved special use permit or conditional use permit. And for those of you who don't know, the county used to do special use permits and those were treated like conditional use permits prior to 2016. So special use and conditional use, although now they're technically a difference. For our county, they were, they're treated as the same type of approval, both required county commission approval. So, so if you had a special use permit back in 1998, year 2000, then if that, if there was nothing restricting that special use permit, then they could come back in and get a permit for a manufactured home. I doubt something like that would, would be in existence, but that's what that's meaning.
Would it be any expiration date?
Not unless it's
Unless we put it in
Unless you put it in
At the time, okay.
Unless you put it in at that time, there'd be no, no expiration date because they go with the land.
Can an auxiliary dwelling unit be a manufactured home?
Right now, yes, unless we say no.
I thought the definition is written was a
Or is it
Was, was a permanent home on that.
Says permanent.
Is a manufactured home considered permanent?
So
If it's on wheels with skirting, it's not permanent.
No, it They could take it off.
Manufactured home would be like a built off-site and then set on a permanent foundation.
Could be, could be.
But a, but a mobile home is
Manufactured home is like what you're referring to as a mobile home, so
I was gonna say a manufactured home could be either one.
Could be either or.
Could be on a foundation or on wheels, right?
So
So then is the way
Want it to be or not, then I guess if, if you don't think a manufactured home should be a dwelling unit, then we need to put it in there.
People pulling trailers behind
Their house, yeah.
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 And that may not really fit the character of some neighborhood.
I think you're right.
It's kind of like the one we had here a month ago.
It could, it could fit under that 1,200 square foot threshold that the board set, so it needs to be clarified whether you want a manufactured home to be considered a, an ADU.
I think if
I think as long
For a lot of it, we do.
I think as long as it would have a permanent foundation.
Right.
I'd be okay with that.
Yeah.
It has to be a permanent foundation.
Yeah, and because, and then I think that
We, we talked about that a little bit in the, in the definition, did we not? It said that second, permanent, single family dwelling. So we didn't really define what permanent means. Permanent can mean bringing it on wheels and put anchors in it.
Well, I think rather than put it in the definition, it needs to be put under the ADU requirements and define what permanent is. Yeah, we're slow. We get it in there somewhere, I think we need to.
Yeah, because I think a, a building that's on a foundation is fundamentally different than one on wheels with skirting.
Yep.
Exactly.
Sure is. Okay, keep that in mind and I'll, we'll make a note when we get to that point, but good point. Thanks, Gar. Yeah. Always thinking, but that's, that's the kind of stuff that I run across weekly, monthly, and it's good to have it
Well, we're just thinking
Yeah.
Somebody is really entertaining putting a second home on their property, a manufactured home was gonna be possibly a, a good option for him.
Well, and we would allow it as, we would allow a manufactured home through the BZA, through a special exception process. So if you wanted to put a manufactured home to care for your elderly parents, you'd apply to the BZA to do that. So that is still potential option, subject to being able to meet, you know, the, the criteria of, you know, a, a child in need or, or elderly parents that, you know, need to be cared for, something along those lines. So that's an option right now that people, people have, but, you know, maybe if we add the dwelling unit option, maybe that would be a better option versus bringing in a, a mobile home or manufactured home, so.
Well, and a mobile home might still be the right option, but I think there needs to be, maybe we, doesn't be provided by right.
Right.
Yeah, exactly. And there's a three-year statute limitation or so on that too with our regs. So you can only have it for three years, then you have to have that renewed.
What, so what does a manufactured home? What are you talking about, the three-year limitation? I'm sorry.
So recall, when you're acting as the BZA, there, we've done two of these, I believe. You are, a citizen is permitted to apply to the BZA to have a manufactured home on their property as a second dwelling unit for the purposes of caring for a, a child in need or caring for your elderly parents, you know? That, that was the only way that we could allow a second dwelling unit on, on a property right now. With that approval, it's limited to three years.
Okay.
Subject to renewal, so.
And that can be a, a mobile home.
And it can be a mobile home, yes. Cause the idea is it has to be a mobile home because after that three-year period, it has to be removed from the property and we get back to one dwelling unit on the parcel. Now, the board can certainly look at it if the situation is still the same for the property or you can renew it for another one year, two year, three year, whatever you decide here. Yeah.
Or if it goes on and on, you then require it to be set on a permanent foundation.
On and on, yeah. If you, if you've done one, you know, and now they're back again, you can say, well, after six years, now we want to be, you know, on a permanent foundation. But that wasn't an option until this is potentially approved.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we still need to, we still need to define that we want a permanent foundation in, in the zoning regs.
If you're, if you're looking at a, an accessory or ADU, additional dwelling unit, then we need to define that it ha, if, if that's what you're gonna classify, then it needs to be on a permanent foundation, it needs to be a permanent structure.
So I guess where I'm going with that is, is there's still an opportunity for John Q Citizen to come in and put a mobile home on there if he come before the BZA.
Yes.
Even though we're doing this in the zoning regulations.
Not as in the ADU though.
Not as an ADU.
But as a, as a medical issue.
They can do, they can do a temporary, they can do a temporary thing just as we
Yes, they can, yes.
I think, I just don't want to handcuff anybody.
Right.
There's still an opportunity that they can, it's just a different set of process that they can, that they have to go through.
Different set of processes and a different, a different set of criteria or need for their
I'm game. I like that.
Okay. Article Four, R2 Zoning District, same, same criteria. Change number four to say communication towers, subject to compliance with the Article Nine. I think everything else was straightforward. I'm kind of whipping through it, but please shout out if you have, have something. Article Five, same issue, number two, communication tower.
Yeah.
Article Six, which is our Village District, same thing, number two, communication tower. And then now we get into Article Nine, which is our performance standards. So the first one, first performance standard is the communication tower. And this is where in conjunction with allowing a tower by right in every zoning district, this would be the criteria that a cell tower company would have to comply with in order to get a permit from the, for the tower on that property.
Okay.
Go ahead, Steve.
Three, A, I would suggest in the second, second, second line, says, so equal distance to the total height of the communication, communication tower, including the lighting, the lightning rod.
So adding the word total?
I don't know, cause adding the word total, which kind of ties it back to our earlier
Leave the lightning rod off.
Well, this just kind of defines it.
Shall be equal distance to the total height of the communication tower, including the light rod.
Yeah, which kind of just expands a little bit on the original definition we had.
Okay. I don't believe there are any changes from A through B other than what you just said from last time. Where the, where the changes came in place, I think Keith was one of those talking about, you know, some of this on grain, grain elevators, water towers and, and the like here. The changes that occurred in here were letters H, I, and J. I clarified again that a communication tower less than 50 feet in height, it should be probably not less than 50 feet in height or less. Cause I
Should we add that, add the word total again just to stay consistent with everything? So it reads consistent?
Communication tower
Less than 50 feet.
50 feet in total height or less. Cause, cause the definition says 50 or 50 feet or less.
Less than 50 feet in total height.
What is
Or 50, you say 50 feet?
You'll say 50 is acceptable. It says 50 feet or more in height. So this, so they're gonna be less than, okay, so we're fine. So we're, that's right. It says 50 feet or more under the definition. So this would be for anything less than 50 feet. So this would be from 49 feet and under. Once you get about, once you get 50 feet or more, it's a permit. If you're 49 feet or less, then you're exempt from the requirements under the performance standards. So then I would say a communication tower, less than 50 feet in total height is exempt.
Right.
Right, Russ?
Yep.
Okay.
That, that short tower still has to be setback
Yeah.
Requirements.
No.
No.
I know. If it's under 50 feet, they, they can build it wherever it's on.
We're going on the property line.
Yeah.
Whatever.
Yep. It's less than, as it is, as it is now.
So it can fall on the neighbors.
Yep. Not subject to permitting. That's what we were discussing last month. I had it everything.
Yeah.
Then we got into the discussion of TV antennas and whatnot, so. If we need to have more discussion, we can.
I don't want you to have to worry about a satellite dish that gets put up.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, I, that, that's, that's craziness. Put it bluntly, it'd be a waste of your time.
Now, help me out on I, cause I was trying to get this done as you, cause I was gone here. Is that what the board requested, that a communication tower anchored to like a grain elevator, a water tower, building or other structure?
Let me ask a question in regard to that. I mean, is it even feasible that somebody might attach a tower greater than 50 feet to a structure like that? I have a concern the, the way it's worded because it would Any building. If I wanted to exempt myself, I would just find a structure or an old agricultural silo and
Bolt it to the sun.
There's no requirement about how it's attached, it just has to be attached, so.
We don't have a building codes and so I can't say that is, is it feasible to do that? I mean, you know, you gotta remember, we're not talking about necessarily cell tower companies, we're talking about any type of tower.
So I could put up a 300-foot tower as long as it's attached to a structure. Green elevator.
You can, you can bolt it to your house.
And I'm exempt from everything.
Yeah.
You don't like that.
I believe what we were talking about before is, hey, you know, the grain elevator, the, you know, the water tower is there now, are they gonna attach?
Why don't we just carry over and just say communications tower, less than 50 feet in total height, anchored to whatever, whatever, whatever is exempt.
So as long as the tower part is less than 50 feet? Like I say, it's on top of a Like saying it's on top of a 200-foot tall water tower. As long as the tower section is less than 50 feet, we're okay with that?
I mean, I don't know if.
Possibility.
See, I caution because, you know, usually it's just the antenna.
Right.
If you're talking about communication, if you're talking about cell communication companies, it's just the antenna.
An antenna on the head.
Because you already got the height. But I don't know if it's anything else. I mean, you think, there's other buildings that, then they'll put a tower on top of another, another building to get additional height, you know, that, that.
Yeah, that's the thing.
Grain elevator may be, you know, 100-foot tall, but they need to be 300-foot tall.
You may have just, you may have just said what we needed to say in there, antenna versus tower. The antenna, but then we need to put a definition in here of what antenna is. But if we put, if we wrote that a communication antenna anchored to a grain elevator, water tower, building or other structure is exempt from the performance standards and permitting requirements. We're not, we're not talking about tower attached to the barn. We just, we're talking about an antenna that's attached to a grain elevator.
Well, we don't do anything with that right now, so do we need to clarify that we're not doing anything with the antennas?
We thought we did.
Can we just delete I?
We do anything you want.
If it's over 50 feet, we've already said it's, it's subject to regulations.
Regulations.
Yeah.
Are you including, are you including the tower, just the tower, or are you including the?
Just the.
Well, you go back to the definition of the communication tower, where it tells you how to measure it.
Total height.
And it says.
So does total height, everything above ground level?
Height of the tower is measured from the grade at the base of the tower to the top of the lightning rod.
Base of the tower or base of the structure?
Base of the tower is what it says.
So if you have, like, say, a grain elevator that's 120 feet tall.
Right, then you have a tower on top, it'd be based, the way the definition is, base of the tower, not the elevator.
And you may not meet that setback requirement. You've got an existing grain elevator, and they want to put a 75-foot tower on top of that. That grain elevator is 120 plus the 75, so you got 195-foot setback. Now you can't, now you can't put the tower there because the grain elevator that was already there is too close to a property line, for example. And I'm just throwing it out there, so. Why side elevator is case in point, it's got, it's got an antenna or, I don't know what it is, antenna or a tower or something on top of it.
Right.
So do you go from the base of the elevator, or do you go from where the antenna starts?
How tall do you estimate the antenna or whatever to be?
I haven't looked at it close, I'd guess 30 feet, but I don't think.
Yeah. I can't see anybody putting a huge, but of course, that's.
I don't see that either.
See it, because it can always happen.
Yeah, I, I don't see it, but the minute I say that, it'll happen. You know, so.
It doesn't seem to be real, like, if someone's going to build a 700-foot tower, like the ones out in the sand hills east of Hudge, they're not going to stick it on top of a grain elevator to avoid regular.
No, I don't know if we're.
Maybe it is a mute.
Or. Think about something realistically, or if it's going to happen or not. Because usually when, I mean, if they're looking at it, they're going to want to hang antennas on that, and we don't regulate the antennas. They're not, like you said, the grain elevator probably a structure you can't handle.
Well, they weren't regulating total height, which would include the antennas.
Well, the picture I got from I was, if I was wanting to circumvent your regulations, I would put my 300-foot tower next to a structure, and I would attach it somehow. There's no requirement, and then I'm exempt from all your regulations.
Couple pieces of all thread.
Yeah, whatever.
Next.
Something like that.
Zone all thread. So they wouldn't be exempt, so something in that, and I get what you're saying, but I would not approve that permit. And if they would want to challenge my, my decision, then they can appeal it to this board.
Why would they come for a permit? Because it says it's exempt from the permitting requirements.
Well, no, because the tower is greater than 50 foot, I thought.
Well, yeah, but it's, but it's attached to it.
Yeah.
This doesn't have any nervous to hide.
So maybe I, so if the typical installation where it's just antennas aren't really relevant, so maybe we just get rid of I, I think, is that what you're saying, Garth? I think that's.
Well, what I want to prove is, you know, Don and I have not had a chance to review this yet. And so that's why, that's one of the reasons why I didn't have on there possibly setting a public hearing date for this, because he and I haven't been able to get together, so. You know, I can scratch it for now, we can discuss.
Ultimately, we don't want to have to, we, ultimately, from my standpoint, wouldn't, I don't want every person, every cell company that wants to put an antenna on top of an elevator to have to come through you.
Yeah. Yeah, and we don't do that now.
No.
So. Weekly.
I think we can just scratch that.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, the only, the only reason you're going to have an issue is if somebody is putting in something that meets our definition of a communications tower, then they've got to deal with it.
What would happen if you, under I, instead of having a communication tower anchored to a grain elevator, to say on a grain elevator? That definitely implies it's on top of it. Not just anchored to it, because it's standard beside it.
Or you can change, yeah, you can change the word on, but.
Why don't you and Don review that and see what?
I'll think about it, I'll do, I mean.
We could, we could wordsmith this thing to death, and I just, I don't know whether it's good to leave it or not.
Right now, I mean, we're just getting rid of it, but.
I'll scratch it for now with the understanding that I'll do a little more looking, discuss with Don, and I'll maybe bring something back different. Because I was just trying to address, I think it was Keith's concern about what about towers on grain elevators and other tall structures that are there right now. And that's why I was concerned that I was capturing what the board was, was asking, and I wasn't sure on that if I was. It sounds like I kind of am, but it sounds like there's more, more discussion that needs to be had.
I mean, I, I don't really pay a whole lot of attention to the antennas or towers on top of elevators and buildings, but I don't think there, I can't think of any that I think are 50 feet or more.
Yeah.
I mean, you look like downtown on top of the Plaza Building.
Yeah.
Or a bunch of towers.
It might be, it might be taller than you think it is.
Yeah.
When you're on the ground looking up there.
I think the Plaza Towers one is at least 75 feet.
Yeah, well, that's a good example.
Yeah. Extreme example, I would say, you know, like the Sears Tower in Chicago. Right. World Trade Center.
Yeah.
Well, let's talk about Reno County, Kansas.
Well, talk about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But Plaza Tower.
Plaza Tower.
Yeah. And the old fire station on Avenue V used to have a 100-foot tower on it.
It did, yeah. Was that, was that on the building or attached, was it?
It was on top. It was very challenging to get to. Had the power department carries up there.
That was fun.
It was.
Okay. All right, we'll scratch it, it's subject to maybe some, some review. Yeah, bring you back, maybe, maybe something different to, to think about.
I mean, if 50 feet is kind of our dividing line, could we say any, any attachment greater than 50 feet on a structure, existing structure requires? Is regulated?
That's the, that's the thing, you know, if there is such, if there is such a scenario out there and somebody wants to put a 75-foot tower on top of a 200-foot grain elevator, is it subject to a permit by me or not?
Well, if I'm.
In case you have to meet the setback, which.
If I'm the neighbor, and that thing is dangling over my house, yeah, I would like it to be, I would like it to have some attention from the county.
But if you have setbacks, it's not going to meet the setbacks, so it can't do it.
Setbacks, so there's not going to be allowed.
Mute issue.
Because grain elevator is already there and ain't moving, so.
Grain elevators don't take up any more ground than they need to, generally.
Okay, I'll think about that and, I don't know, we'll see, we'll see what happens. The last one dealt with is something that I hadn't, hadn't thought of, and Alan, again, was leading the charge on, on that, was the size of the equipment shelters, and when is it going to be conditional use permit, when is it not? And so what, what's at the, at the end, isn't obviously going to be subject to the regulations. I just put that in here, I thought it was easier to do that. So I did some research on the conditional use permits that we've done over the last 10 years with cell towers. Sometimes they put equipment shelters in, sometimes for whatever reason, they, they don't. But my research, where I've issued permits, I've had three permits for a 12 by 20, one permit for a 12 by 30 equipment shelter, and one permit for an 11 by 24 equipment shelter.
That one would be the only one that exceed the 300.
Yeah, so that's what, that's what that is saying, it's not like, this is going to be part of the regulation, I just wanted to put that in for the board, if you didn't catch that. And so that's what we've done as far as permitting goes, and so, so I thought, looking at those square footage, is 300 the number? You know, if you're going to be doing an equipment shelter greater than 300 square feet in size, then you need a conditional use permit. Based off of what the permitting is there. If you want it less than or greater, that's fine too.
Since you only had one that was going to exceed that 300 square feet, I think that's probably about in the sweet spot. That number.
That's kind of my thinking.
It's not like most of the time, people are going to comply with it.
Yeah, I mean, most of the time, maybe, I, I mean, it's an interesting thought, Alan, again, I, I had never even thought about that. Somebody wants to put a, a large equipment shelter in there to house the electronics for the tower, but also use it as a staging area for trucks or whatever. Yeah, well, yeah, that's something a little bit different than just a small equipment shelter for the tower. I haven't, I haven't seen that, but, you know, you got to be prepared for stuff like that to happen if you don't have that regulation in place. So if they want something like that, then.
They're going to come talk.
Yeah, they can come to, yeah. But we're not opposed to it necessarily.
Yeah, not opposed to it, but hey, what, what else are you using that for?
Yeah.
Exactly, so.
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
Okay, good. Might be a township. It's already half-built. Or half-built.
They don't have.
Well, some do have towers, you know.
Built and half-built.
So. So that was for the Ag District, those, those set of regulations. The same thing was copied over on page 9-3 for the residential zoning district. So if I'm following you, I would add, under letter A, what Steve wanted, add to the total height on the second sentence, second line, excuse me. To the total height of that. And then, and then under letter H on the backside on 9-4, 50 feet in total height.
And then I is a question mark.
Then I is a question mark or a scratch. And then letter J was okay. Does anybody follow?
Easy, you are.
Questions so far? Yep. Next one's fairly simple, our article 14, we're going to add the word, words communication tower in there, because there's a listing of height regulation exemptions, if you will. It says that these types of structures, if you will, are not subject to the height limitations within the residential zoning district. We have specific height requirements for cell towers, you know, the one-to-one ratios, so it's covered that way, just so now, what this does means that they don't need to get a variance to put up cell tower in there. Okay, last one, article 15, we'll start talking about ADUs. First page, first page number 52 was the old cell tower regulations that we eliminated that you requested. I just put the word reserved in there because I, I'm not sure legally if I can just take numbers 53, 54, 55 and move them all up without doing a text amendment to that.
This is easier.
Yeah, I just put the word reserved, it's easier just to do that. Me, I think I have to do a text amendment, but I'm very picky in that because we are technically changing recreational areas from number 53 to number 52. I put that in for now, I'll probably talk to Patrick and say, hey, what do you think? Can I just move these up or not? If I can, then we'll just do that and call it good. But for all intents and purposes, right now, I'm going to put the word reserved in there. That just means that, that word means that, you know, we could put something in that spot in the future if we need.
Our nuclear. It's 54.
Uh, no.
They go past.
No, it goes past, it's like 59 or.
Well, you'd have to move all.
Yeah, I'd have to move all of those. We'd be doing a text amendment for every single one of those conditional use permit items, so.
We'll talk to Patrick.
Yeah, exactly.
We're going to do a text, you know, hearing anyway, so we just do it all at once.
Easier just to write the word reserved and call it good.
And then you got to cross-reference that, do you have any other references to those regular numbers you're changing?
I know, yeah, exactly. See, you can see how it just compounds the issue, because if there's something in that says, you know, recreational related activities number 53, and if it's in article six, oh, now I got to go back and change article six. So it just compounds when you start changing stuff like that.
Run that through your, your word search program.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, and then I can see where all the, and that's how some of these issues come about, because there's, there's conflicts there. So now we're going to talk about the Ag District and shipping containers. Last month, I think there was some discussion on what we're calling them. And there's also some of these containers, if you will. Shipping container is kind of a catch-all word, generic word. I also added the words intermodal freight container, I think that was Alan, I think you had mentioned that again last month. That way, that should cover any kind of shipping container on, on a, on a large ship or something that's brought in by semi-truck. Probably question for me on number four, I, I guess, I was struggling with words again. Multiple storage buildings with an attached roof will not count. I, I don't know if I like the words will not count, but I can't come up with any, anything different. If you can, that'd be great, and it's kind of in my haste, and I want to get this ready to send out to you, so I just put that in there and, and if you can come up with something maybe more professional to say.
What, what you're saying?
Help me out with.
Say will not be included in the total, in the permitted number of independent.
Included or?
Will not be included in the permitted number of independent shipping containers on a parcel.
What about, what, okay, I'm, I'm hung up with the storage building, multiple storage buildings. I would, I would much, I, myself, as I was reading that, I was saying, I was thinking, multiple shipping containers or intermodal freight containers with an attached roof will not count toward the, the number of independent shipping containers on a parcel. Because if, when you're saying multiple storage buildings.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking stick-built.
You need to say multiple independent shipping containers, intermodal freight containers.
With an attached roof.
With an attached roof. I think that's what we're talking about, so we, yeah, I agree with you there. And the same thing up on two.
Well, I think, because the reason I, so the reason I wrote it that way is because we're, under letter K, this top, we're talking about, it's like, I kind of caught what you were saying, because I had the same thought, but then I thought later, okay, we're talking about letter K, storage buildings constructed or intended for prior uses as shipping containers. So we're talking about shipping containers under that section. We're not talking about.
I was, I was looking at it as, as it was standing on its own, not as.
Yes. See, I was too.
So once a shipping container is dropped off in the yard, it now becomes a storage building?
Yes. Yeah, it's a type of building.
It's a type of building.
It's a four-sided building. It just happens to be a shipping container, intermodal versus a, a stick-built shed. So, yeah, so, so, yeah, if you, if you take letter K, think, okay, storage buildings, this, it's kind of like the definition right here. Storage buildings that are intended for prior uses of shipping container or intermodal. So that's what we're talking about, so then everything under numbers, under letter K, 1 through 4, is referring to shipping containers.
So do shipping containers, once they're dropped off and they become a storage building, are we counting those toward our square foot?
On our, yes, on our accessories.
Okay, is that written somewhere, or do we just assume that?
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. It is, but not under the ag.
Because ag, we don't have.
Ag, we don't have that. Yes. If you go onto the backside somewhere, if you go under the, we'll get to that under the residential districts. Yes.
Kind of.
This is the ag.
Avoid some of the confusion we've been talking about. Could you change the first sentence on K, say, storage building construction intended for prior use of shipping container or intermodal freight container are subject to the following limitations, one, two, three, four, or restrictions or something like that. It says, okay, that then cross references K to use.
Following.
Storage building in the following.
Limitations, restrictions.
Yeah, to the following.
Or guidelines or?
Not guideline. We'll use guidelines.
Restrictions. I like restrictions.
Restrictions. Why? You were saying what we can, how many you can use on what, you know, restricting the use.
Or.
Like two on a residential use, no more than more than two, you know, whatever.
Really hung up with storage buildings being that lead off in that sentence. If I'm if I'm a new reader to this document and I'm looking for a shipping container, unless I have an electronic copy and I hit control F, I'm not going to find shipping containers.
So change change around and say shipping containers or intermodal storage freight containers used as.
As storage buildings. Yes, that's that's where.
That better.
Yes.
Flip it around.
Because if I'm scanning this thing for a regulation and I'm just scanning and I see storage buildings, I'm rolling right to the next page.
Just go that way and that way.
But you want your eyes to hit shipping.
I want my eyes to hit shipping containers.
So you start out, say, shipping containers or intermodal freight containers used to storage buildings.
Yep.
Are subject to the following limitations.
Correct.
Something like that.
That's, I mean, I fault me for reading like that, but it's, I'll guarantee you, they're going to roll through this and be scanning it in a somewhat of a hurry and not seeing what they're wanting to see.
Fine. I like it.
Yeah, I do, too.
Is that all right? Hardly anything? Okay. No, I mean, that's I hadn't thought about it that way. I was just trying to keep it consistent. If we're talking about storage buildings, constructor intended for use as that. Now I was trying to use the word storage building throughout the document because I say letter K is dealing with the shipping container.
Well, I think this helps even with one, two, three, and four because you're you're saying you're dealing with, okay, we're dealing with shipping containers or intermodal freight container containers.
And they're considered.
Using as storage buildings and then we're discussing limitation on storage buildings.
Yeah.
Okay. I like it.
And then I believe what we had, number four, I think was the one change is if you're going to put a roof on them, then it's not going to count toward the number of independent ones, meaning separate containers, but it will count toward the total square footage of all your accessory buildings. Once we get to the residential zoning district side of things.
I could stack eight of them and put a roof on it and have my walls 16 feet tall and 80 feet long.
One thing that I was thinking of with this, again, we do a lot of ag lot splits. Well, ag lot splits aren't necessarily an agricultural parcel because they were, most of them now are limited to seven acres and we have a lot of those out there with their zone ag. And so are they, if you go by the ag district, then they don't have that square footage limitation.
It's got to be used for ag purposes.
I think we, well, if it's zoned ag.
To be exempt from the the square footage limitation.
If if the property is zoned ag, they don't need to even come to C mark.
So if you're if you're if you do an ag lot split and you're you're not changing zoning, so it may be a residential house and that's the the intent of that district. But but there but the square footage limitation is for the residential zoning districts. Maybe that's something that we need to change elsewhere in the regulations.
I think I think our almost on those smaller lots, that that square footage might be almost, it won't be dictated, but it'll be influenced by sanitation.
Mm hmm.
How big a building can, I mean, they they might already have the building put up. Well, your building is too big. You can't put anything. We can't, you can drop a well, but we can't put any septic out here because you consumed all your property. So there's 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 some, I I, from an ag standpoint, I don't think we need to worry about it.
Most of them are seven, but, you know, yeah, you could go down minimum three, you know. And so seven acres, you're not going to have a septic well issue.
Help me out on number two there, K two. Two storage buildings are permitted for residential
So if you're, so we're talking about the agricultural zoning district. And so we have the shipping containers are for ag purposes. You can have as many as you want. You're you're fine. You know, because they're for ag purposes, storage or grain, whatever. But if you are using a shipping container for what I would say a residential use where it's storing your bicycles in, store your motorcycle in, you know, residential purpose store antique furniture in, and that's not ag, so that's not exempt. So then you're going to be limited to two in the ag district for a residential use. And that kind of gets back to what we were talking about with the ag lot splits as well. And the square footage, I mean, are you gonna, are we going to let them, because they're ag, have five or six of these if they want?
So you could have a ag lot that was a little over three acres. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, it just seems if we're allowing an unlimited number for agricultural.
For ag purposes. So you're now you're talking about parcels that are 40, 80, 160 acres.
So how are you going to go out? Who's going to who's going to go out and and look at these containers, crack the door open on an ag lot and, oh, this one's full of side by sides and and motorcycles. Oh, this next one is full of seed and feed.
Yeah.
Nobody.
To do that, you have to fill out an ag exemption, you know, permit. But, yeah, I mean, you're right, realistically.
Realist, so why do we even have that number two there in an ag?
That's what I was trying to get in my head. What? If we don't care if there's 40 of them for ag purposes, what why do we care if there's?
Two with side by side.
You're talking about a smaller smaller parcel.
But that's not that's not defined here, though. Then we need to determine, then we need to have a different line that says, well, then it needs to be every, if that's if it's a small, if we're looking at smaller parcels, then every container, every container needs to be in the calculation for accessory building.
Because right now, the way you're saying it, it's written that if you lived on 40 acres and you had a farm, but you wanted a couple of shipping containers to store your boat and your side by sides in, you'd only have the two.
Right.
Even though you've got 40 acres.
But if you put seed and fertilizer and.
Then you're going to have a hundred.
Bag of fertilizer.
Built a building for your combine or whatever, you could have as many as you want out there.
Even though it's the same lot, it's the same lot.
Okay, I mean, yeah, we can.
I mean, I get the smaller lot issue, but we don't address that in any way.
That's not, yeah.
If we're one per acre.
Not yet, I mean, so maybe.
If we're concerned about the, if we're if we're concerned about the footprint that these containers take, then they need to be included in the accessory, in the accessory building footprint. Does that make sense? I mean, I think we do later on, don't we? In the in the when in the R1.
The R1 we do, but the ag is not subject to that.
Then we take then we take line two out of it.
Yeah.
In the ag side. If we don't care what they have in it, however many they have to put there.
Or do you want me to add it for a certain acreage and under, seven acres and under or whatever?
Then we're then we're starting to split hairs. Then we then we need to, then we then it's easier just to say to, because we've already got the accessory square footage values. I don't know if values is right. We have, you know, 2.9 acres and under and 3.0 acres above are X and, you know, 2,000 and 5,000. If they if they have a house and 30 by 30 garage that's connected to the house, well, that's all one piece. But then they build a 40 by 70 on this three acres. They're about, they're they're out of accessory building and without coming to us.
If they're zoned residential.
Yeah.
Okay. Because this is ag.
Right. So do we care?
Yeah.
I.
Maybe.
If I if if, yeah, I don't want, I mean, I. We don't want it to become a a a storage container farm out there on that seven acres. That would be crazy. I wouldn't like to look at it, but that's not my business.
But we don't care if you if you have seven acres of stick built buildings.
No, we don't.
So what's the difference?
There's not a difference.
See, like two and three were kind of together because, you know, you're, if you wanted to do commercial use on a seven acre ag lot split for a a commercial business, that's where we can permit more than two for a commercial use for that.
But a commercial.
Residential property.
But a commercial use on ag zoned land would still require a conditional use permit. Like whether it's shipping containers or stick built containers or?
I think we take number two and distract it because on an ag lot, on an ag lot, if we don't care that they have 16 of them building a building, or they're just laying them out there like cordwood, why do we care what they how they're using them?
I guess I agree with that.
Have we have we been regulating these in the past, storage, these shipping containers?
Yeah, I've done permits for, not a lot, but I've done.
I mean, what were the prior?
Well, the the reason we're addressing this now is because there is a conflict in the regulations. One part of the regulation says that you can have one, another part says you can't have any. And so that's why I'm trying to get rid of that conflict right now in in the reg. If you go back to the original set of regulations that had the strike through, you can see that that conflict in there, but it's in two different sections.
I mean, you you drive around, you don't see a whole lot. You see a few here and there. I mean, the guy down the road from me, I know he's got two of them out on his place.
There you go. I have issued, I have issued a lot of permits, but a lot of people don't think they need one. That's what I'm guessing for a shipping container.
Yeah, I can think of some.
I would.
They don't think of it.
Looking from that standpoint, I would hate to have to make a guy that's already put up his, put four or five of them out there as for ag use to, I would have to explain to him why he would have to get a permit to get two more to put his side by sides in residential use. I would hate to have to explain that to him because I don't know that I could.
No.
So that's that's my that's my standpoint. That that we just need to strike that. That's my.
Well, it goes back to the fact, you know, that, you know, no regulation is perfect and no regulation can address every single scenario. So, yeah, if you have your 40 acre farm, you know, say, I've got two out there for grain storage. Now I want another one for my side by side. Yeah, that's hard to explain that away, but there are many other parcels out there that are also zoned ag that aren't, you know, 40 acres as well. So that's that's the struggle that I have with a lot of these regulations. So so I don't so do we regulate it at all? I guess go that. Is that what you're kind of thinking, Steve? Do we regulate these at all?
Oh, yeah. I think there needs to be something in there by right. So if they come in and they they talk to you, you have the blessing to say you're good to go. I think we need that. They don't, it it goes back to when we bumped that accessory building square footage numbers when we when we had that conversation. That's something that doesn't need to become, need to come before this. You don't have to.
Right.
Prepare a great big long report. Is it going to be suitable? Is it going to affect the neighbors? Is it going to do all that? I'd in an ag setting, I don't believe that's the case.
Let me throw this out then. Okay, we do away with two. Three, you're saying no more than two, two storage buildings for commercial, industrial, or other non residential land use. May be permitted with a conditional use permit.
Danny.
Then you go down to four and you say multiple storage buildings with attached roof will not count towards the permitted number of independent shipping containers. So if you have somebody who goes in and puts four of them in there for commercial, industrial, or other non residential land use and puts a roof over them, they're okay. Okay, that's, I mean, that's, I mean, that's my interpretation of what we've got.
Right.
So we say you can only put two for for, you know, industrial uses, commercial uses. But then if but if they put a roof over them, then they can put as many as they want.
Yeah.
Yeah.
See, it's a building. It's a different type of, that's kind of what the direction was, I thought, last month, wasn't it?
Yeah.
But if it's a building on an ag parcel for non ag use, it still requires a conditional use permit anyway, right?
If you're running a commercial building.
If you're running a commercial building, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I think two is safe to strike. That might be another subject that you and Don might want to.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, we'll we'll bat that around a little bit and come back with more more discussion. So then still in the agricultural zoning district portion, the next subject was the additional dwelling unit. So under letter M, I changed the word from accessory to additional. I think everything else was the same. We're going to have no more than one ADU per the zoning lot or parcel. You can convert a legal non deforming building or portion thereof to an ADU. Here's where the one change was number four. That's this is where we had a size limitation based off of the current house that's on that property and the board wanted to strike it. So I struck that. Now it's like, if you've got a, you know, a house out there right now, your ADU can be 1,200 square feet maximum.
Yeah.
Not based off the square footage of your existing house. Remember before it was based off of the square footage of your principal house. If you had a thousand square foot house.
Like we talked last month, I mean, 1,200 square feet, that's 35, 40 foot building.
And that would include like an attached garage?
Or you could put a detached garage.
Is it not? It'd be, it's a 1,200 square foot building period.
Well, I just was thinking of somebody with a special needs vehicle.
Right.
You know, they take up a lot of space to, you know, get the lift extended and and then that same person probably needs more square feet in the house to get around. And I don't know if 1,200 is the right number or not. That was just one scenario that I was thinking.
Circumstances, though, they could come to the board for.
For variance.
Variance.
Yeah. Yeah, but. No, would not. So it's it's a 1,200 square foot building, just like, you know, if you had an attached garage on your your principal house. I mean, that still counts as square footage to your house.
Well, that's what I was thinking. So.
But like Steve said, you can do a detached garage.
So they could still apply for variance?
Yes.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, they do. If if that certain need arises and like you said, they had a a type of vehicle that had a a lift in it, yeah.
Now, would an attached carport be included in square footage? So if you had just a lean to roof type thing for a carport?
No, because a carport's not a four sided building. So it wouldn't count.
No.
Could do something like that.
I'm just trying to think back.
Full of evil site and sheltered.
Oh, question. Yeah, I my initial reaction is no, but the reason I'm I'm pausing is because in the accessory structure and the calculation. In the accessory structure and the calculation of the total square footage, we do count the lean to. Remember, we had that discussion because that lean to, it could be a twelve by eighty foot lean to on the side. That could easily be enclosed. And now you've added some additional square footage to your building, you know, you do a sixty by eighty. And now you do a twelve foot by eighty foot lean to on one side. You're gonna have siding on one side of it, and it'll be open on the other two sides. But theoretically, again, you could enclose that, those two sides, and now you've got an addition on your sixty by eighty. So we did count the square footage of lean tos. And that just helped everything being upfront, and say, okay, here's your total square footage. So if they want to enclose it, they can enclose it later and not have an issue with zoning. But if it's attached carport. Different than a lean to.
It's like, well, we've got a carport on a couple of our rentals and it's not, you can't really enclose it. And then it becomes the same kind of finished space as the actual house. It's just a metal roof and a couple of four by four.
Yeah, and it's, I'm just kind of thinking out loud, yeah, so I, you know, and that's like, if it's a carport, that sense, metal thing, metal carport you find. Then, no, that wouldn't count toward the square footage of the house, even if it's attached. But if it's like a, a wooden one or the same, same type of material. If some, some carports can be, you know, wood, you know, then, I don't, I would, I'm not gonna. I'm probably not gonna stress over that, something like that, but a good thought.
On M, on M one, do we need to add the word permanent again? I know, I know we have it in our, in our definition, but maybe we need to have, should be constructed as a separate permanent accessory building.
Permanent accessory, you use permanent, separate permanent, actually, yeah, I like what they, separate permanent.
And then we need to define what permanent is, right?
Yeah, probably need a one A, permanent. Now we're getting into building code.
Well, I, I mean. I think we're just talking, I mean, it can be defined as.
Foundation and foundation crawl space and or basement.
Something like, yeah.
Something to that effect.
Concrete slab or.
Yeah.
Something that's not, has, doesn't have wheels, not.
Yes.
Not on blocks, not on blocks.
Must be constructed on. Yeah. Yeah, like you said, slab, concrete slab, concrete pad.
Concrete pad, concrete slab, yeah.
If you do a one A.
Foundation.
Expand on that, yeah.
Right. Still file at the registered D, stating that the ADU cannot be sold separately unless. Unless it complies with subdivision regulations. I didn't have any other changes, I don't think the board had any changes on the rest of that from last month.
How about if somebody wants to make a shipping container into a.
Into a house.
I mean.
It's, it's getting to be done.
It's been, uh, there's probably some out there.
There are some out there.
Yeah.
That'll be for future text amendments to talk about, you know.
Is it on a permanent foundation?
Yeah.
Well, as heavy as those critters are, I would, one would not want to live in something that's just on a couple cinder blocks.
You know, the, the shipping container homes, the tiny homes on wheels. All those alternative, what I call, I guess, types of dwellings, that's all gonna be probably subject to a future text amendment on. Just to clarify more, not necessarily restrict, but just to clarify that they're allowed or they're not allowed.
You're looking for whoever, okay, there you got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On a rule.
Yeah.
Well, because the way we're writ, writing this, a stereotypical tiny house would fit under the ADU. Because they're mostly on wheels, aren't they?
Some are, there's some that are, you know, sometimes you take them off. They can be.
And then that would, and then they fall under the ADU.
So right now, my interpretation of those types on wheels, that's just like an RV. Because you can pull it off and on the properties, it's easy like you do like an RV. And so, so those aren't allowed, the one, the tiny homes on wheels aren't allowed on a property.
They could build one on a permanent foundation.
Build one on a foundation, that's a different story, yes.
They just built two in Hutchinson.
Right.
Fifty Maine or somewhere around there, and they were like prefab. Put together panel kind of construction.
Having on trailers, it's just like an RV, so. Okay, so then, now we're gonna transition to the residential village district. So then, storage buildings under letter G, I'm gonna switch those words. That sensor out as a shipping container or intermodal freight containers. Or storage buildings.
Same word you can't apply it on K.
Yeah. No limit if it's used for ag purposes, that's, now, in the R one and R two. We won't allow one, one, or allow two. R one and R two, you're talking about, in theory, uh, parcels that are. At least an acre in size, up to thirty nine point nine nine acres. R two is, is between one and two point nine nine acres. Seventy two, again, sanitation code compliance and setback compliance and everything.
Chances are, if they're gonna have one, they're gonna have two.
R two is what size?
One to three.
One to three.
And R one is?
Up to thirty three. Thirty nine, usually around thirty eight acres.
Well, my beef is still the fact that we don't regulate stick built. And, and I could throw up a rusty corrugated tin structure. And nobody, I could put three of those on my property and nobody would care about that.
Those are under the total square footage.
If you, if, yeah, if they're under the, if they're under the accessory square footage and, and, and or you say they're for ag use.
I mean, appearance, we're not, we don't regulate appearance.
No.
Make them out of used, used barn tin.
And we don't have building codes.
No, no.
Mark, what's your thought by right? You, we're gonna give them one storage building on R one and R two. We really don't have any way of forecasting foot traffic or requests on whether or not it, that, that's gonna either bump your workload. Or otherwise. But by right, you can bless one, but if they wanna put two, they've gotta go through the conditional use permit, correct?
On R one? Not if it's residential use, no. The only time you do the conditional use permit is for commercial or industrial.
Alright, so.
You just can't have two in the R one, R two for residential purpose.
So they need a variance if they want two of them. How would they do that? If they're coming through and they, I've, I've got forty, I've got thirty five acres out there, okay, I'm, I'm rural, I'm R one. And you're, you're limiting me by right, I can come to you with a signature and a stamp and get one of them laid out there, but I want two.
Go to our zone, egg, I can put as many as I want.
But it's, but it's R one, it's, it's real residential, so now I'm, now I'm working on a different set of rules. I want them two, you can bless one without any problem, what's, what's the process to getting two?
We would have to write it in here that if you want more than one, that that is something that the BZA can consider as a variance. Because we only vary the, the bulk regulations. And so our, our variance procedure says that we can only vary like article thirteen, which are the setbacks and the height restrictions. And, and, and the lot size. We can't just arbitrarily go in here and say, oh, yeah, let's, let's get a variance for that.
So they would have, so if I'm that landowner with thirty five acres, you're blessed the one, but I want two. I'll have to go through the BZA to get the, get a, get a variance.
Allowed to, because it's, it's restricted here, variances aren't allowed for anything like that, you know, because, because.
But if we wrote, if we wrote in, if we wrote a, a one, a, a two A in there. Additional storage buildings have to go through the, the BZA process for variance.
Okay. Yeah.
I, I think that would cover it, because. Yeah.
Or as a special exception.
You, you'd have to decide.
Special exception would be better.
You'd have to decide what process.
Variances are mainly just for setbacks, heights, and lot configuration, I would rather add it as a special exception.
What's the process for that?
Huh?
What's the process for that?
BZA hearing, just like exceeding the, the total square footage of a, of a structure.
Okay.
That, I like that, if you wanna write, that is like a two A, if you, if you. I don't know how you want the word, you can work smooth it how you want, but.
Yeah.
Any additional must go through the.
Per special.
Special exception.
Are we gonna say if you put a roof over the two that you want, then?
In R one, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, it's in there, it's.
If you, if you have two and you put a roof on it, then it's, it's not counted, we're talking about independent shipping containers. So if you have the two and you put a roof on it, then you're good to go. Now, you still have the square footage. Yeah, you're still have to, the accessory building, square footage plays into it then.
Okay.
I like that, because I don't, I don't wanna handcuff somebody, you know, it'd be the same re, the same way we, we, we don't handcuff somebody. That I've already got five thousand square feet of, of accessory buildings on my, on my property. And I can't build anymore, but I've got plenty of acres to build that extra forty by eighty to put my. Car collection in, whatever, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there.
Yeah, yeah.
We, we allow them to do that if there's plenty of property, so I think that's a good move.
You know, and, and you're thinking about the thirty five acre R one, and that's great. And, and I get that, and that seems like, wow, I can only have one without doing this. R two, you go to the other end of the spectrum and, you know, and you've got like a, a, a three acre lot. Or even an R two, where you got an acre and a half lot, and I'm in a residential subdivision, now you're gonna, now you're turning my residential subdivision. Into an industrial site because you're allowing, uh, two or more shipping containers on your property. So, so that's the struggle that I come up with.
If it, if it comes, well, but what we're writing in is, one is by bless, you can bless it and there, they live long and prosper. Set it where you want it, go, but if they want a second or additional, they gotta come through us. And we can, we then, through that process, we can determine, okay, you don't have enough, you don't have enough land for this thing.
Can it be the same thing that we used to have, probably when you had thirty five acres and you were limited to two thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can approve it, but we can go through this process and you more than likely get it. And I understand, but that's the struggle that I deal with, you know, because we've got three acre R ones in a subdivision. Where, uh, you may not wanna have multiple shipping containers, but then you got thirty five acres out in the middle of nowhere. It's, it's essentially farmland ground, just having to be, uh, less than forty, but now you've got this added restriction. And you gotta go through this added process.
Add two A, two B, two C, maybe even. Two A, R one has the ability of having, of, uh, going through the, the special exception process for additional ones. R two, you're done, or I would say, R two, you're done with one, because that's one to three acres.
Yeah, generally, I mean, yeah, there's, yeah, there might be some, we always have some, you know, computer program glitches. Where, you know, there might be a, a, a three acre R two or whatever it might be like that, but, um. So you want the special exception only for R one?
No, I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm going, I'm working backwards now, I mean, R two, they could put two of them on there.
Three acres, you could.
Yeah.
Depending on what else they had on there, but, yeah.
They also put it on one acre then, too.
I would say that if they wanna, if, if it goes through the special exception process, at that point, sanitation's gonna get involved. That, I mean, we're gonna get a lot of other, other things involved in this to make sure that they've got the footprint to put this thing down. I think that, that's an all right move. I think, alright, we don't know what we don't know, it's kinda like that two thousand square foot building, how many buildings did we just rubber stamp?
Right, right.
If we, we, we don't know where we're starting if we don't have any reference, so let's start with that. And if it, if it becomes something that just overloads you, we can quickly react and put a text amendment in there that says, hey, this is crazy.
So special exception for more than one.
Yep. And if we start seeing some weird stuff.
And if it's for a commercial, then it's a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Alright. So, well, well, we just continue on, this is, then go down to letter I with, with the ADU. Now, this is the ADU for residential zoning districts.
Same changes, I think, that we made previously.
Okay. Then on page fifteen, eighteen, uh, again, no changes on that. But just to reiterate that, we'll allow you now to live in your existing dwelling. While you build a new dwelling on, on your property. That's something that not clear in the regulations, but I have allowed people in the past to do that. Subject to the removal of that, that existing dwelling. But now, if it still qualifies as a twelve hundred square foot accessory dwelling, now they could theoretically leave that. The existing house on the property if they wanted to. And then, under fifteen one eleven, on the backside, last one on page fifteen nineteen.
Five.
Storage buildings are prohibited in R three and village.
Are there, are there any currently in R three or village?
You beat me to a question. Yeah, we had some Yoder.
Are they grandfathered in or?
Uh, it's gone now, but, um, more likely, I can't tell you if they'd be grandfathered in or not, depending on when they put it out there. But, um.
Yeah.
So, village districts consist of Midora area, um, Saint Joe area. There's some village there.
So if they're already there, are they just grandfathered in as non-compliant?
Yep, maybe grandfathered in.
Do we wanna consider rewording that, that paragraph to be more in keeping with earlier verbiage? Saying that's used of shipping, shipping container, we're gonna, freight containers as storage buildings. The R three, single family resident village one are prohibited.
Yep.
So if they want one in the R three or V one, they're gonna have to come prove to us that they are running a business out of it. Using it, using it's a store, they're doing, they're, they have a lawn care business and they're storing their mowers in it over the winter. That type of thing.
But if it's their personal mowers, it's prohibited.
Yeah, it's great.
No, no residential use of it, yeah, because there's, there's some. Well, I, I think mainly Yoder, you know, businesses down there, if there's, if there's some house or room on, on a lot to be able to, to store. A container on there and they wanna have some outside storage and they want, they choose that, then. It would be a conditional use permit, it'd be part of that conditional use permit. The only problem with it, I guess, is if it's, well, I mean. I mean, if it's the existing business, then they just have to do the conditional use permit for the shipping container. for the shipping container at that point in time.
Gotta keep you busy somehow.
Huh?
Gotta keep you busy somehow.
I know, yeah, gotta be, earn my money somehow, you know. I don't know unless, if it's the existing, I could see doing it in conjunction with a new business like the coffee shop or solar place. If it's the existing business, that'd be pretty tough to go through a conditional use just for a shipping container. Take that all away, the county commission, just for that specific use.
Yeah, that would seem to.
I don't know, maybe, maybe I write, uh, write something different. And since we're going the special exception route.
Chances are it's gonna be on the consent agenda anyhow, so it really doesn't.
Oh, yeah, it will.
But now, if we do the special exception, does that go to the county commission?
No.
So it's something we can approve, it doesn't have to.
So it would be something that could potentially, it would, it would save somebody about a month. Because by the time I get, get out of here and get it up there.
Things in time and it also, the county commissioner don't have to deal with it.
Right, they don't have to deal with that, right, so.
So maybe that's a route to consider going.
All right. What else?
Well.
This reminds me of, uh, discussions I remember about these barn dominium. You know, when theirs, when those first started showing up, oh, they were probed that and we can't build that in our neighborhood.
Well, now they're all over. That's another type of home that I would like to add to the regulations, just for clarifying language. I do a lot of those, yeah, a lot of those.
So I just view storage containers as another example of something new and different that, that we're resistant to. And I still go back to, okay, if you don't want my storage container, I will build the ugliest structure I can build out of the junkiest material and there you go.
You can, so, okay, I'll, um, make those changes and we'll reconvene, I guess, next month and maybe we'll, I'll have it on the agenda, potentially setting a public hearing date if we think we're getting closer.
I think so.
Um, we don't have to, it's always, you know, possible setting a public hearing day, you can look at that. That will be, that public hearing probably will be till after the first of the year, you know, on, on this, um, depending on how long that would take, I could potentially look at a training session, uh, I owe the board training session, I know, but we've been busy with regulations. For solar, is there any topics you think that we could maybe consider or?
If you're considering subdivision regulations, it might not be a bad refresher. I know we had one, maybe what, a year ago?
Yeah.
It might not be a bad idea to kind of go through the subdivision regulations. We go through them so often. We, I have to relearn them every time we have, have something come through. And then you could kind of tie in a discussion on, this is where I want to tweak it, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I can do a training on our subdivision regulations and that might trigger some thoughts on some potential text amendments because it's, you know, I, I've got some things that I'd like to do uh, in addition to those subdivision regulations to.
Are there topics that we had, uh, you know, our own little kind of strategic planning process about future, uh, feedlots, uh, you know, what, whatever was on that list?
Yeah.
Are, I know there's more on the list that we have got to, but.
You had that list, I don't know, it wasn't been, yeah, three, four months ago.
Yeah, I have the list, yeah, yeah. I have the list.
Look at that.
Within that training session.
Yeah.
Yeah, for sure.
Do we have any cases?
What the next step?
Careful what you ask.
No public hearing case next month.
He dumped all his stuff on us all at once.
Going through a little bit of a drought.
That's what we're getting paid for.
Double time.
I just earned our mileage.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay, I can do, I can try to put something together for that. Go have a discussion on subdivision regulations so you have a better, we don't do a lot of subdivision plans here, um, because I think we're a little restrictive on, on some of that stuff. And I know Don and I have talked in the past about some text amendments and we can have that discussion on if that's feasible to this board or where we want to go with, with that, such as public roads and, and the plating requirements and stuff that go along, you know, with that. So I'll, I'll put that together and if we, if we get to it, great. If, if it takes more time to do this, then that's fine too. We can do that some other time. But yeah, I do owe you guys a, a training session, you know, yearly, and I know, like I said, we were busy with solar regs, so we haven't got a chance to get to it like I wanted to, but I'll put that together then. That's all I have.
Any other business you brought before this board? All entertaining, we should do a, do a adjourn. So moved?
Second.
We've moved to the second to adjourn, all in favor of adjournment?